Thank you all for coming out to the ASC Town Hall meeting. We've recently had our core approved, not only our core, but the core assessment. And so shortly, we're going to have a huge gathering of a bunch of key full-time faculty members to make sure that the work that's being done on the core assessment is being done appropriately. And we're going to try and gain some efficiencies there. The Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board asks us to assess our new core, but then we also have SAC's General Ed Assessment that has to be done as well. So faculty are going to be working to make sure that those are integrated, and we don't want to reinvent the wheel, so we'll try and make sure to the extent possible that those two areas of assessment dovetail nicely together. So I see a bunch of faculty here from the B building, so thank you all for your efforts in getting the core approved and the assessment underway. So that's kind of a small update about things going on at this facility and instruction in general. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to our president, Dr. William Sorata.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good morning and welcome to everyone. It's certainly my pleasure to just give an update, and I won't take very long with regards to the update. And then we get into question and answer if anyone has any specific questions. So first and foremost, a couple of things that I want to review today is six areas. Really want to go over an update of where we are with the Southern Association Commission Oncologists, SAC COC. Talk about enrollment, the strategies that we're implementing to bounce back with regards to enrollment, and as well as some of the reasons why we did see the decline and we actually planned for it. I want to touch on the compensation study that is moving forward and let everyone know where we are with that. The district-wide master plan, that was the meeting I had right before this particular meeting to finalize that particular piece and give everyone an update of where we are with regards to the district-wide master plan. I do want to talk about Professional Development Day and the strategy that we're moving forward. And then we'd be remiss if we don't tell our own story, if we don't celebrate our own successes, then we can't expect anyone else to. And so we need to make sure that at every opportunity that we sing our own praises, that we hear, that I say thank you for the wonderful work that is occurring at this institution, in particular at this respective Administrative Services Center. So this is, I guess, the fourth update that we've had and we've gone through, and so let's just really jump right into it. The Southern Association, our report is due actually in about two weeks, exactly two weeks. Our report is due on April the 15th. As you know, the Southern Association came in, we submitted all our documentation late 2011, early 2012 to SAC COC. The way that they have it, it's an off-site team that meets in Atlanta, they review all the documentation that all institutions submit to them, and then at that point, they deem areas that need further review, areas of concern that they may have. And so from the off-site team, they look at 93 different areas, and they came down to 12 and said, "We need additional information with these respective 12." Then we had an onsite visit that came in early 2002, pardon me, in October, early October of 2012, late October actually, because they were here right close to Halloween. And upon that, they said, "Okay, there's six areas that we feel that you need further documentation." We provided that documentation, sent it as a response to that report, and then the board at SAC said, "Okay, there's three areas that we still are not satisfied." And those three areas were with regards to full-time faculty, so let's give an update of where we are with regards to full-time faculty. And what they did is they said, "Let's look at the percentages of where you are, the percentage of sections that are taught by full-time faculty." And we looked at a 10-, 12-year period, we had never hovered anywhere between 47% and 52% on full-time faculty. We never were less than one percentage point in any one given year either way, and when SACs came, we were just under 48% when they came and looked at us, and that was as a whole. What they did is they turned around and said, "We don't only want to see where you are as a whole, as a district, we want to see where you are at every campus and every program that you offer at that respective campus." And that's when they finally gave us the clear direction of where we needed to be. Well, a lot of kudos to Mr. Smith, the deans, human resources, all the support areas for really moving this forward, and obviously to the Board of Trustees who approved an 8% increase in our taxes, which generated the revenue that we needed to move forward in hiring full-time faculty. We hired 48 full-time faculty, approximately 48 between the fall and the spring, and we are now showing that our preliminary data shows 60% of our sections are taught by full-time faculty. So we far exceeded the benchmark, and we're very happy with the progress that has come forward. They were non-competitive one-year appointments, and then we agreed that we would go through a competitive process. They're all going through competitive processes right now. I see them, I sit with each of the respective committees as they come through. Again, a lot of work that went into this, and certainly appreciate all of the support that we receive from throughout the district, in particular, human resources, finance, and then obviously the leadership of Mr. Smith and the deans to get all these particular areas moving forward. Again, that snapshot in 10/11 was about 47%, and you see that we're at 60%. Quite an accomplishment for all of this particular work. Ultimately, we believe that this will help facilitate student success as well, so that was the core requirement, that was 2.8. Anytime that you have a finding, so to speak, in a core requirement, it's automatic sanction. And so we automatically went on to warning, and it's somewhat backwards. Warning is actually not as punitive as probation. Probation would be the next step. So we're on warning, we're submitting all of our paperwork to the Southern Association that is due on April the 15th, and then we'll hear back from them sometime in June, probably mid-June, on whether we have submitted and we have provided enough documentation and evidence to deem reaffirmed. We are fully accredited, and we'll remain fully accredited whether we are deemed eligible for reaffirmation or not in June. The process, the way that it works is, once you're placed on warning, you have up to two years to eliminate the warning status, to take care of whatever issues they have concerns with. If for some reason it's not satisfactory to the Southern Association this summer, then we have one more year to deal with it. And then at that point, if they said, "It's still not satisfactory," which I highly doubt, they would then say, "You are now going into probation status," which is also a two-year process. Now, we've worked really hard, and again, kudos to everyone in this room, all the support areas, all the leadership from the faculty, the deans, and instruction. We believe that we'll be reaffirmed this summer based on everything that we've done. Faculty was the first area that we had to address. In addition to that, the other two were not core requirements, they're what we call comprehensive standards. And the comprehensive standards is a series of areas included in there are 3311 and 3312. These are institutional effectiveness. Now, there's also a core requirement that is institutional effectiveness. We were found in compliance with the core requirement, which means we do institutional effectiveness, but there were two areas where they felt that we needed to do a little bit more, and that was in 3311, which is student learning outcomes. So what have we done to address student learning outcomes? Well, in addition to the great work that we were already doing, and what they said is we had not submitted a representative sample, so we're submitting all of our student learning outcomes and all of our particular programs, but we also hired Maria Gomez as our Director of Student Learning Outcomes, someone dedicated to looking at this particular area on an ongoing basis, working with the programs, working with the faculties and the deans as well, to go through student learning outcomes. In addition, we've also hired consultants to review this. I'm very proud of our institution, as each of you all is, but this is not the time to be proud. This is the time to say, "If we need assistance, let us have a third, a fourth, a fifth set of eyes, look at our documentation, be critical towards us, and say, 'This is where we don't see that you're meeting this particular requirement.'" So we've moved forward with that. Assessment has to be part of what we do, and everything that we do. We need to not just do things because we have a gut reaction, because this is what we think is best. It should be based on data, it should be based on the analysis of the data. We implement it, if it works, we institutionalize it, if it doesn't work, we tweak it, or we eliminate it. It's okay to stop doing something that does not work. And in this day of limited resources and a tightening of the budget, we have to do that. We have to determine what are we doing right now that we shouldn't be doing, and let's stop doing that. Now, obviously, if it's a federal law, if it's a requirement, we have to do those particular things. In addition to 3311, which is student learning outcomes, they also talked about 3311-2, which is the administrative units. So every single administrative unit has to have an institutional effectiveness plan, and what they said here was that they didn't see, we weren't documenting that we were closing the loop. So we have to develop a plan based on data and the analysis of the data. We have to then measure whether we're making progress on those particular goals, and then what are we changing? What are we learning? You have to show learning in the administrative units as well. And so one of the examples, Vice President Gonzalez and Darryl Henry eliminated late registration. And so we would expect that there's some learning that would occur from that. Do students now register on time? Well, obviously, if we eliminate it, they have to. So how are we showing learning? Well, we take the last cohort that we allowed to register late, and then we measure their progress. We measure how well they did. When we've done this in the past, when I did this in the past, we could show that those students not only registered on time, but they did better as far as their grades. They learned. They were in class on time, and therefore they were able to learn. So assessment will be part, and you all know me well enough as far as the data and how important the data is to me, to measure everything, with the caveat that we always remember that there's a face behind every single data point at this institution. We're trying to effectively impact lives in the El Paso region. Enrollment is a big part of what we do, and as I said, I'm sure you read The Times as I do, and in the fall semester, you saw, you know, El Paso Community College, largest enrollment decline in the state. Well, it was one of the largest. It wasn't the largest, but it was one of the largest in the state, and we actually did two things. We eliminated late registration. When I did this in the past, it had about a 3% impact on enrollment. Well, we had a 5.5% decline. What else did we do in the fall? Well, we had to limit the number of sections that we provided with regards to adjuncts because of our percentages with the Southern Association. So those two things combined, we saw a decline of about 5.5% in the fall, and we saw a similar decline this spring. Now, the expectation and what I've seen in the past is that students learn, and they will now bounce back. And so we have to look at the different enrollment strategies to bounce back, and I'll get a little bit more deeply into those particular strategies. So one of the enrollment strategies that we're looking at, we're not only going to work smarter, we're not only going to work harder, we have to work smarter. So what kind of tools can we provide for everyone to help this institution work smarter and ensure that we're utilizing our resources to the fullest of our ability? A lot of kudos to Dr. Giron and her team. I saw Gary walk into the room. All of Information Services, Information Technology, they have done a tremendous job of utilizing technology, implementing, and we're in the implementation phase right now of SEVITAS learning. And what SEVITAS learning does, in December, those of you that participated in Leadership Academy, I see Dean Webb in the room. Dean Webb was part of the Leadership Academy graduates and presented, in particular, his one was on, "We need an app. We've got to, students, it's intuitive for them, and so we've got to have an app." And there was more than half of the presentations that we heard with regards to applications and putting the data into students' hands. I full-heartedly agree with that, and I was actually very pleased and wasn't ready because until the board acts, it's kind of difficult for me to report on something, but we had on the board agenda the approval of SEVITAS learning. And so we knew that SEVITAS learning was, if we tried to develop apps, and that's wonderful for us to do that, but if someone else has already had the expertise, has already put the resource to develop them, and it is merely us implementing them, then that's a better use of our time and resources, as well as learning. And so SEVITAS, those of you all that have a Latin background, or you're a good Catholic like me, and you remember Latin from catechism classes, SEVITAS means community. And so it's really community learning, and we're implementing SEVITAS learning, and it puts the apps into the hands of the students, which is what we're trying to do. Apps like Degree Map. And so Degree Map is both for our counselors and advisors, as well as faculty, as well as the students. They have access themselves, and what it shows students is, they can get into their degree map and to their degree plan, and it shows them, "Here are the courses that I'm enrolled in, here's, based on a speedometer, how far in my degree plan I am. If I switch majors, here's how far, it could be further." We know that we have some students that take courses out of their majors, or some students that major in nursing and allied health and haven't been officially accepted into a particular program. It will then turn and say, "If I switch majors, this is how much further I have to go, how many more credits, and how much more it'll cost," based on tuition and fees at El Paso Community College. It's tailored towards what we do at this particular institution. We're very excited about the possibilities of moving this particular area forward. Ah, my apologies, I got ahead of myself. So let me go back to Texas Completes and Early Alert. This institution has been dedicated to completion for some time. We've been, we're round one achieving the dream institution. We started that work in 2004, so we've been doing that work for a decade. And we're looking at, how do we get to the next level? Well, completion by design was a Gates initiative that was five states that were, four states that were participating. Well, they got to the end in Texas and thought in 2000, in the summer of 2012, "Texas is too big to be successful," is what the evaluation from the Gates Foundation was. And so they decided not to fund Texas. The five institutions that were working on completion by design, they had a conference call, and Dr. Roberts did a great job of representing El Paso Community College, and they all agreed, "We're moving forward. We'll fund this ourselves. Without the funding from the Gates Foundation, we, the five institutions, will move this forward." And so Texas Completes was born. And we continue to move forward with Texas Completes. And what we're looking at is college-wide teams to determine early alert with regards to our at-risk students, as well as engaging our faculty with our students. That is the number-one predictor of student success. If we have a student that's engaged with faculty, that connects with a faculty member, that student's going to be successful. So in the fall of 2012, Mr. Smith challenged the faculty to get to have some sort of feedback mechanism, a quiz, any kind of thing in those first three weeks, to get back to students and say, "Here's how you're doing in my class." Spring of 13, those students then determine, and they report out on how they felt, was that happening? So in 2012, we were at 51% of our students saying that they got prompt feedback within the first three weeks. When we measured again after that challenge in 2013, statistically significant increase, up to 58.7%. So our faculty rose to that challenge, they provided that feedback. We're now upping the ante, so to speak. In this past fall, Mr. Smith challenged the faculty once again, and the CSE actually is being administered this month. And so we'll see where we are. And again, to increase, to increase the engagement between faculty and students. Already spoke to SEVITAS, sorry. That was me looking at the bottom of the page rather than the top of the page. In addition to SEVITAS, what else are we doing to work smarter? We're implementing a series of technology tools. The Kresge Foundation funded ADAstra. ADAstra looks at our scheduling and determines the efficiency of our scheduling based on student needs. Based on, so in the fall, as a former English faculty member, if I have 3,000 students taking Comp 1 in the fall, and we have a success rate of about 75%, 80% in 1301, and our persistence rate is 89% from fall to spring, then how many sections of 1302 should I be offering in the spring? At what times? Et cetera. And so ADAstra helps us do that. It looks at the entire district and the efficiency of our scheduling, and helps us ensure that we're providing the schedule that students need so that they can be successful. Lot of kudos to all of our programmers, to all of our IT folks that are implementing this, to Darryl Henry who's working with them on this particular area. What else are we doing? College Schedular LLC. College Schedular is, so when I was a student, I used to take what we called the Class Schedule, which was printed still. We no longer do those kinds of things, which is wonderful. We want to be as green as we possibly can and utilize and save our resources. But in there, it had a paper document that had Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. No weekend classes back then, or at least at my institution. And so I would say, "Okay, based on my schedule, these are the classes that I want, there's the faculty," and so I would write in a pseudo-schedule. And then at that time, it was telephone registration, and it was, the phone number was 2603212. That's scary that I remember that. That was 27 years ago. And I still remember dialing in, and you had to get on campus because the off-campus is only so many phone lines, the programmers will know this, dedicated to the off-campus students, even though there were 30,000 students off-campus. There were more phone lines on campus for the 10,000 students that lived on campus. So I had to stand in line, wait for a phone, and then dial that number, and then based on my written schedule, I would then try to get, register for those particular courses. Well, what these young men did, and young ladies, students at a Cal State in Northern California, they, you know, five years ago, saw that people were still writing schedules as a pseudo-schedule. What they did is say, "Okay, let's turn around and let's automate that." And say, "Okay, here's the schedule that I would like to have." And College Schedular will then read through our 30,000 sections or so and determine which is the, you know, based on the student needs and desires, they hit it, and it says, "Here's the best schedule based on what you said were your parameters." And then they turn around and interfaces with Banner and allow students to register, to then turn around and lock that schedule into the Banner system. So these are the kinds of things that we look at as far as utilizing and being more efficient and doing things from a student's success lens, doing things from based on the data that helps students be successful. All of this in order to increase our opportunities with regards to enrollment. In addition, when we look at graduation at the end of every year, and I have the privilege of shaking hands as students walk across the stage, and then I also go to a lot of the early college high school ceremonies that they have at their respective campuses at Northwest or at Mission, and what I notice is, despite the fact that our enrollment right now is about 58% female, 42% male, what we notice is about 2/3 of our degrees and certificates are earned by females, earned by ladies, which is wonderful. But the last time I checked the US Census data, this nation and the world actually is about 50/50. And so what we're starting to see is, we're starting to see young men, and male students in particular, male students of color, that are not engaging in higher education. They're not participating at the same levels as our young ladies, and they're not being as successful once they do participate. And there's a looming crisis. It's been recognized by the College Board nationally, it's been recognized by the Coordinating Board statewide, and so we have the privilege of being a part of the Texas Education Consortium for Male Students, in which we are trying to ensure participation and success of young men. It's not a zero-sum game. We're not going to stop doing the great things that we're doing for young ladies, or for ladies in general at this institution that are enrolled with us, but we need to see. So in the 70s, the lines crossed. So what you'll see is that in the 70s, there was a huge gap between participation, in the 70s, we started to work on, "We need more young ladies to go to college and to be successful in college." Those strategies have worked. We're not going to stop, we need to continue to do that. Around 1992 or so, the lines crossed once again, and what we see is, we see a widening gap of young women participating in higher education and being successful in higher education versus young men in the region. And so we need to address that. We're doing that through the Texas Education Consortium for Male Students. There are 12 colleges and universities that are participating in this particular program. They were selected through a application process and this particular grant, and there are two school districts that are participating. Austin ISD, that's participating with ACC and the University of Texas at Austin, and El Paso ISD. And so Superintendent Cabrera and his team, we just had a meeting with them with regards to the pathways and what they're looking at in increasing male student success within the district. This is a partnership. We can, we get the students that we get from the particular school districts, and then we have the obligation of facilitating their success. But if we're not getting enough students come through the pipeline, that's hence the partnership with EPISD. Dual credit in early college high schools. We have long had a wonderful reputation as a national model of early college high schools. We're expanding our dual-credit opportunities. So back in the 2001 or 2003 session, I forget which one in particular, House Bill 1 provided the opportunity for all seniors, all seniors throughout the state of Texas, all high school students to have the ability to at least be exposed to up to 12 hours of college credit. So this is old legislation, but it's legislation that hasn't necessarily been adhered to. We don't see students coming, graduating from high school with those 12 hours. 15 hours is a benchmark that Kay McClenni and others at the University of Texas at Austin say, "If a student is successful hitting 15 hours, then their likelihood of success in college rises dramatically." And so the combination of House Bill 1 that was passed in the 2001 or 2003 session and that CSE data, what if we had 25% of our high school seniors graduate with 15 college credit hours? Notice, I didn't say an associate degree. 15 college credit hours. The law already says they should have access to 12. So 25%, so every year we graduate about 12,000 seniors, and that number's growing, by the way. And so if we had 3,000 of them graduate, they turn around and enroll at EPCC or UTEP or any institution of higher ed, and we've measured the data, we actually get 54% of prior dual-credit students within four years of graduation. And guess what their success rate is? 87%. A, Bs, and Cs, because they've already shown that they're college material, they've already shown that they're college-ready while they're still in high school. And based on the House Bill 1 and then that 15-hour mark, and these should be core courses, English, histories, governments, a math class. So we could get that. This has been the number-one college-going initiative that I've seen statewide, and it's not unique to us. If these students go to the university, they outperform the native student at the university. The data's very clear. So what if we were able to increase that number to 25%? And then once we get to 25%, let's try to get to 50%. We have six functioning, very successful early college high schools. We signed a letter of agreement and were approved for our seventh, which will be Burgess with EPISD. And then we had a unique opportunity. The state legislature passed a bill this past session, in the 13th session, that indicated workforce innovation needs solutions. It was a project entitled "Wins." And what that said is, we have students, what if we had an early college high school that was focused on career and technology? Where students graduated from high school with a market-valued certificate or associate of applied science? It was somewhat of our idea. We had a lot of brainstorming sessions, we let some folks in Austin know, they ran with it, and they got legislation passed. And so the three commissioners, Commissioner Paredes for Higher Ed, Commissioner Williams for TEA, and Commissioner Alcantara for Workforce, they all put in a million dollars from their budgets to fund five career and technology early college high schools. It's an application process, we submitted an application with EPISD as our partner. And this would provide us the ability to offer those market-value, high-value certificates and degrees. We'll learn probably sometime this summer whether our application was accepted, and we're looking forward to that. Now, with the expansion of early college high schools, that would give us eight if that was approved. Over the next few years, and Socorro's already expressed an interest of expanding beyond Mission, we need to do this well at a very, at a very particular pace that we drive. It is a partnership between the school districts and the college, and so we're going to be very meticulous about how we move forward with these particular projects. This is one of the early and exciting areas that we're moving forward with. Now, all of those enrollment strategies, and then we head into the compensation study, a comprehensive compensation study. Now, you'll notice that I talked about a lot of enrollment issues, and we'll touch a bit more on this as well. The Board of Trustees last summer directed me to move forward and conduct a comprehensive compensation and classification study at the institution, to hire a firm outside of the institution, to look at all positions from the vice president position down, faculty, staff, et cetera, all positions, save the presidents, and look at the compensation. The Board of Trustees truly wants to ensure, they value everyone in this room, everyone at this particular institution, and they want to make sure that they're providing a fair wage for the wonderful work that each of you all does, for our faculty, our classified staff, our professional staff, our administrators. And so we've selected the firm, and we are in negotiation with that firm. Mr. Ruben Gallardo, who's our director and administrator in purchasing, is working with that firm to ensure the cost. Dr. Roberts and many of the folks who are part of this committee, including the presidents of the CSA, the PSA, as well as faculty senate, are the representatives that they deemed to move forward with this. So we want to make sure this is a very open process. It'll take about six months to complete, and we have to have the revenue to make sure, I'm pretty sure that they're not going to say that everyone's overpaid. I'm pretty sure they're going to say that there's some areas of the institution that we need to adjust, and that's fair, but we need to have the resources. Hence you see how important enrollment growth is, for several reasons. I look at the data, you all know well enough that I look at the data on a regular basis. In our county, in El Paso County, 74% of our population has less than an associate's degree. 24% of our population doesn't even have a high school diploma. And the data's very clear, the more you learn, the more you earn. There's a direct correlation between your educational attainment level and the salary that you earn. And so we're a growing area as well. Our region continues to grow. And so if we're growing, and we know how valuable higher education is to the quality of life of the population that we serve, then our enrollment should be growing as well. We did some things for student success that were specific, and that's why we saw enrollment decline. The expectation is that we should see that bounce back. And the reality of the budget is that 2/3 of our revenue is driven by enrollment, tuition and fees that our students pay, whether they're on financial aid or not, and then state reimbursement for contact hours. So there are things- So there are things we need to do at the institution. There are things that we should do at the institution. And therefore, if our enrollment grows, which we expect it to, then we have the resources to move forward and provide for our faculty and staff, as well as the students that we're privileged to serve. And so that firm selection is already, the firm has been selected, the negotiation for the contract is moving forward. Other areas that, that take revenue to move forward with, our comprehensive master plan. We're moving forward with this, and actually the meeting I had right before with this was to look at the final contract, to make sure that the final agreement, that we're all on the same page with regards to moving this particular area forward. And so where are we with the master plan? Well, the Smith Group along with Mijares and Mora were selected unanimously by Board of Trustees to lead this area with the college. They'll look at the entire district and do an assessment of our, of our five existing campuses, as well as help us design the Fort Bliss campus. We expect this to take right about a year, ten months to a year, for this particular area to come forward. Again, what other, what other, what other resources do we need to move this forward? I've been very clear with the Board of Trustees from day one, as we go forward to build a new campus, that that new campus will need new faculty and new staff to run that campus. Now, some of you choose to want to work on that campus, wonderful, but we've got to backfill your positions. Everyone in this room is already stretched, I know that. And so we can't open a new campus and then say, we're going to take, you know, thirty people from Villaverde and another ten people from, from the Mission campus to put them at Fort Bliss. We can't do that. We'll, we'll end up sacrificing quality, we'll end up sacrificing the offerings that we're making at our particular campuses. And so what we'll have to do with the Fort Bliss campus, Dr. Roberts will be leading this initiative with the architects, moving forward on the design, ultimately the construction of that new campus, the financing of the bonds. We know that we have about eleven million dollars for the Fort Bliss campus. We know that's not going to build a campus of the size and structure that we believe is merited in that particular region of our city. And so we'll have to move forward with a finance plan as well. But we, we're going to start to gear up for that already, starting with this particular fall's tuition and fees, and the general use fee, the administrative fee that we have. We have to make sure that we provide inadequate faculty and staff district-wide. So the Board of Trustees recognizes this as well. Professional development. You know, every day, at the end of the day, from, from my perspective, ninety percent of the resources of this institution leave. They walk out at the end of the day, which is everyone in this room, as well as everyone that's an employee of the district. Our goal and our responsibility is to ensure that everyone wants to come back. And part of that is to have a fair compensation, as well as to provide professional development. And the opportunities to bring folks to help develop our faculty, staff, and administrators. And so one of the things that we're looking at with regards to professional development is, we have it every fall in August, and we're going to continue to do that. We have faculty development, we'll continue to do that, we're not going to stop doing that. But we would like to have, and I would like to have, a day where the entire institution comes together. Faculty, staff, administrators. So during that last week of August, when we're doing professional development, or the middle of August, Vice President Gonzalez, the majority of her team is trying to process students through the enrollment process. A lot of Dr. Roberts area and the cashiers, they're trying to collect payments to process students. Our counselors, our advisors are working with our students to get them into the proper classes that they need to be in. Our programmers are making sure that, you know, we're in a crunch period of time, we want to make sure that the system is running efficiently, that it's not slow, that it's not in danger of crashing at any particular time, that we don't have the healthcare crash that we saw yesterday, with so many students trying to register at the last minute. So procrastination's just not our students. And so what are we, we want to make sure everyone comes together, they can't do it at that particular time. And so what we're looking at, the Calendar Committee has worked, and we have some proposed dates. On a Thursday, September the eighteenth is a proposed date where we all come together. And I'll do a state of the college, where we are in the fall semester, where we're headed, where, where we are as far as our goals, et cetera. Where we are as far as Saks, we'll know by then. And then, in the spring, we're looking at the proposed date of Tuesday, February tenth, after Census data, after the bulk of the processing has already occurred, where we can actually shut the institution down for professional development, and all of us come together. And in the spring, what I'm looking at doing and working with the Calendar Committee and working with each of the constituency groups is, what if we brought in a speaker for that? And you don't want to hear me every year. In the fall semester, I'm more than happy to do that. But we can't send everyone to see John Gardner in North Carolina, but we can bring John Gardner to us, to present to the entire college. So these are the kinds of things that we're looking at doing and implementing. Again, a day that we, that allows us to come together in the morning, to do some activities, and then in the afternoon to work with your individual teams to do some, some real high-level planning, so that we can move this institution forwards. Many times, we get so bogged down in the day-to-day of what we're trying to do, we don't get to plan. And so what if we had a day, at least an afternoon, where we could do some of that planning? Finally, again, if we don't recognize the great work that's happening at this institution, then, then no one else will. And so we need to make sure that we, we're very proud, and we talk about the great things that are happening at El Paso Community College. So you notice that there's no name tags for Mr. Smith and I, we're not being recognized, but the folks in between us are being recognized at NISAD. And so you see Dr. Yancey Tox, Ken Gorski, Margie Nelson Rodriguez, Grace Vaughn, and Dr. Paula Mitchell. Those are our two thousand fourteen NISAD Excellent Award recipients that will be recognized in Memorial Day Weekend in Austin for our institution. Very proud of their accomplishments and all that has occurred. In addition, some of the great things that are happening right here at the ASC, and these are just some, I recognize that I cannot go through and name every single one. And so the great work that's being done that I don't name doesn't mean I don't recognize it, I absolutely do. So EMSTI, we have a wonderful partnership with EMSTI, you know, that allows us to provide employment opportunities and scholarships for our STEM students. And so you know these students with STS, they're fantastic students that we move forward. We've got a wonderful partnership with Mr. Johnson, Renard Johnson, who by the way will be our commencement speaker this May. Very excited for him to be our commencement speaker, I think that he's a wonderful role model for our students, someone from the area, someone that has done well, someone that gives back to his community, for our students to want to emulate. In addition, our travel and tourism program, you know, culinary arts, we have an incredible program. Dean Webb and the vision that he had to move that program forward, the world-class facilities that we have, the amazing students, what they're able to do. You know, that students don't have to go to Houston or Phoenix or Scottsdale for these particular programs, they have world-class facilities right here. We have a great program and a great partnership with the Border Plex Alliance and those particular institutions and entities that you see. And we're focused on developing and marketing our region's hospitality and culinary arts, and how well we do with that. So this is a wonderful program that I wanted to acknowledge. In addition, cosmetology. You know, every time I walk through Building B, they're going, and I see the young ladies and some young men that are participating in this particular program. And I spoke to enrollment, the kinds of initiatives that we're doing, here's a model program that said, the demand is so heavy, we're going to start offering night classes, evening classes that we're going to offer in this program, so that students that want to go into this particular area are able to do that. And they do quite well, well, at least the ones that my wife goes to cut her hair with. So I've seen the checks that are written for that particular area. And so they're increasing, not only increasing enrollments, but they're increasing graduates. And they have a one-hundred percent pass rate on their licensure exam. Wonderful program and great initiatives to move forward. We certainly appreciate that great opportunity. And also, going back to some special recognition, you know, we're looking at the Green Advantage Program. Okay, this is the first of its kind, and it's a grant award that we received as well for Hispanic-serving institutions, a national program, again with culinary arts. Kudos to Dean Webb and all of the chefs that work in this area, all of the students that participate. And you see that one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar grant that was provided to this. I know they couldn't do it without grants and administration, Al Lawrence and his group, so we certainly appreciate the great work that is occurring there. And ultimately, I wanted to thank everyone for the great work that they do. I know how hard you work, I know the pride that you have in the work that you do, I know that you do it because you're thinking of the bigger picture and giving back to our community. We're very fortunate to work in higher ed. Higher ed is a noble profession. We're trying to help students reach their dreams. You know, there's, there's not a lot of noble professions in this world, medicine, healthcare, but education's a noble profession, where our whole goal is to help others become successful, to facilitate their educational process so that they're successful in life, to increase the quality of life, and increase the educational attainment level. So I want to thank you all for all that you do. In addition, I did want to mention that I've been told there will be a blood drive right here, where's Dr. Stroud, that will be occurring tomorrow. And so we've long been recognized, another community service that we do, today. Good. Well, so those of y'all eat something so you can donate blood. I haven't eaten, so I'm not going to donate blood. But those of you, I certainly appreciate all that you do. And, and the blood drive is going on today. We've been recognized as one of the leaders in delivering and providing blood, the gift of life, to our community. So please, if you're encouraged, I encourage you to do that. And I certainly thank you for everything that you do. Questions?
I'm taking a course in the Viro de Campus, and I just go there twice a week. And in, in my short visits, I've had three people come up to me and ask me, where can they find a building to get admission? And they are absolutely lost, they go around in circles and cannot find it. So since the master plan is being done...
Yeah, wayfinding is part of the master plan. Signage will be part of that, absolutely, totally agree. And that is part of what we negotiated, is part of the contract to work with the Smith Group. You're absolutely right. You know, I still get lost, I'm sure. That's, that's not unique to you and to, to students, but it's part of the wayfinding. And as an architect, you absolutely know all the, that goes into that as well.
And in addition to that, there's another suggestion I have, is that we have several campuses, but each campus has a unique look. And I was wondering if we could somehow have some kind of unity, and so that a student knows this is an EPCC campus.
Sure.
Like UTEP has the Bhutanese architecture, and it's very distinct, you know from a mile that that's a UTEP building.
Sure.
If we could keep that in mind, too.
Great suggestion, sure. We'll take a look at that. Part of that is, that's another thing, you know, we know that community colleges are convenient, but it doesn't mean that our students know the convenience and the value of the community college, doesn't mean our students do. And so Joyce and her team have worked hard, and they're, they're, they're moving forward with additional commercials so that students, you know, the name of the campuses, we obviously know them, our students may not know them, the look of the campuses, et cetera. Part of uniformity is usually the monument signs that we have, those things can help us. You know, that's one of the unique things of the community colleges versus the university. University, one location, you come to us. Community college, several locations, we want to be as convenient, we go to where the students are. And so that's part of the master planning process, but we'll, we'll certainly look at the uniformity opportunities and possibilities. Any other questions? Any rumors that I need to dispel? See, given the day, it's April first, we, there's April Fool's Day, yes. I thought about telling everyone that we won't be observing Christmas, because that seems to be the most rampant rumor that I'm going to do away with the Christmas holidays, which is silly. Spring, our spring break, that's even better, yes. You know, the things that I've done in the past, I never ever had staff come in during spring break. Why? Because students weren't around. If students aren't going to be around, then we're not going to obviously be open when students aren't around. And they're not around during spring break, so that I can assure you is never going to happen. Yes? Hi, Terry?
I'm Dr. Sarada. You were mentioning that we're going to have more office in the back.
Mr. Smith did, yeah.
Yes. What about parking in the front?
Yeah. Well, do you see any more land?
No. Can we go left?
Yeah, you know, that's a great suggestion. With regards to going up, you know, parking garages, I've explored parking garages for a long time. You know, given my work in student affairs and enrollment management, parking garages are very difficult to recoup the cost of building the parking garage. I've done the math, and it, it was about, I want to say sixteen thousand dollars per spot, depending on about a four-hundred-space parking garage. And so to recoup it, so sometimes, I don't know, I get feedback on the twenty-five-dollar parking fee. So imagine paying four hundred dollars a semester. You know, I mean, it's just something that, that's, parking garages are unrealistic. We understand, we certainly recognize the parking difficulties at the ASC, although I do see a lot of parking spaces around Building B. And I know that, that, you know, shortcuts, and I only want to walk across, and I see some of our students do those kinds of things as well. And it is something that we, that we are certainly cognizant of, and that we certainly recognize, and we're looking at long-term solutions. You know, one of the things in partnership with the city, the, the water building that's right near us, there's a lot of parking, there may be possibilities there long-term, but it is something that will continue to be challenged with. So please understand, we certainly recognize that. It's not something that we don't recognize, and we'll, we'll continue to do our best to address it. Please. Yes. Hey, Mr. Nandis.
Just a rumor, okay? Just a rumor? Throughout the years, you know, we've had small, you know, reductions in some of our medical benefits, like the COPE. And there's some more rumors that the state is going to be cutting some more of our medical benefits or benefits.
Yeah, you know, that's one rumor I haven't heard, and that wouldn't be me, that'd be the state, by the way. A couple of things with regards to that, though, Mr. Nandis. We codified in the last session, in the last legislative session, we codified the agreement between the state and the college. Now, in, in somewhat of, it's not what, it's not a win-win, so to speak, because we went to fifty-fifty, and at one time it used to be about eighty-four percent that was covered by the state. And they, they chopped it in half in two thousand and eleven, went all the way down to forty-two percent approximately, Ms. Ryan will, will know the exact figures. And so we saw a really huge decline in, in that, now in our healthcare with regards to the state. Now, we were able, the fifty presidents and chancellors agreed and moved forward and worked with the legislature and codified that it would be a fifty-fifty agreement. So we theoretically went up to eighty, I mean, we went up eight percent to fifty percent, which is a gain, so to speak, but from what it used to be, it, it isn't nowhere near what the state used to cover. And this is where the state goes back and forth. You're a state entity, you're not a state entity, you're a state entity, you're not. I have not heard that, that, that that's something that the legislature's looking at. I will tell you a couple of things. State revenues are up. You know, sales tax revenue is up. And so it could be a nicer session. I'm not going to say it's going to be a great session, it could be. Depending on the turnout of November, we'll know more about which way it's going to go. Now, I don't think there'll be more harm done, I don't know, I, I, but I'd be remiss if I said I thought there'd be a windfall of additional funds for higher education, and for education as a whole. Now, K through twelve, depending on the, the Kate Court, the course gates, that will determine whether they are going to get additional windfall of, of billions. Higher ed, I don't know. Now, I have not heard at all that the state legislature is looking at cutting our benefits at all. And we did codify. Now, just because it's codified, they can always change the law. Okay? But this coming session, the fifteenth session, does not look like, you know, it's nothing like the eleventh session, and it should be as well as the thirteenth session, hopefully better. Up, up front, right here. Hi.
As a parent, I have a student going into high school. You mentioned data about early college and dual credit. My question is, is it possible to share that data with parents like myself?
Sure.
Who is really interested not only in the data for students going into college around here, but also out-of-state colleges? At this point, there's a lot of rumors about how out-of-state colleges won't accept those credits, and so that's one of the problems.
No, absolutely, that's a great question. Certainly encourage your student, here's what I would say as a parent as well, mine are longer ways probably, that yours is going into high school, yeah, mine's in second grade, and that's the old one. So I've got a long way to go. But the data's very clear with regards to how successful students are within the state of Texas. Now, as far as transferring credits and courses, what I would recommend to any parent and beyond our early college high schools is to stick to the core. Englishes, histories, governments, mathematics, some sciences, if you stick to the core, those courses in Texas are guaranteed to transfer, number one. Out-of-state, believe it or not, the students that I worked with in the past when I was at a different institution, we, we actually had fewer issues transferring courses out-of-state to institutions like Stanford, than we had in-state. And there was really only one institution, and it pains me to say which institution we had the most difficulty in transferring, especially since I graduated from that institution twice. So that was the institution we had the hardest area of transfer. But we're continuing to work on this, there's some new studies.[1789.71] But we're continuing to work on this, there's some new studies, um, uh, the, the editor from The Times sent me a wonderful link to an article that now the data is showing more and more that students, you know, the data that was always used against us, community college students that want to transfer and get a four-year degree, they're less likely to go, and they're less likely to transfer, and it's because of the community college, and students should really start at the university. These articles and these studies now show that the reason students from the community college are not graduating with baccalaureate degrees at the same level as the native student that started at the university is based on the number of credits that institution accepts from the community college. This could open up a whole, speaking of the legislature, a whole new way of looking at this particular issue. Um, but please, yes, we'll share the data, we're more than happy to do that. Um, I, you know, have your student come to EPCC, and, and then beyond that, decide where they want to go. Any other questions? Hi.
Yes, Dr. Sarada, can you touch on the impact of the new TSI assessment?
Ah.
And what that means with adult basic education, et cetera?
Sure, from my perspective, and I probably need remediation on this law as well. From my perspective, I'm very concerned of the new TSI. The new TSI is the Texas Success Initiative New Exam that the state, believe it or not, in the, in the eleventh session, this was part of the eleventh session, that we would look at the, the Texas Success Initiative, the exams that we use, and come up with another exam, so to speak. Um, we worked, uh, the, the coordinating board worked with, um, the College Board and Pearson to develop a new exam. The preliminary data from our students shows, um, again, it's preliminary, we have an N of less than five hundred students, so it's still a small segment of our students. Um, we're always told that high school, you know, that we have to be honest with ourselves, and you know, the thirty, this is the commissioner's example, not mine. The thirty-two-year-old single mom that is reading at third-grade level, that we can only do so much. And that we have to look at different pathways for that particular student. You know, my, my rebuttal is, what about the student who's reading at ninth-grade level? That, that we can show, we can get up to speed within a year, year and a half or so. So, um, they went on a listening tour, the commissioner and his staff, on the new TSI. Um, and I asked our staff to run some data so that I would be prepared for that particular listening tour. And I said, pull out, I want to see recent high school graduates, last three years. Pull out dual credit, pull out early college high schools, because those students are, are, um, curvebusters, so to speak. Even though they're representative of students from across the board, so pull them out. And the new TSI, our preliminary data showed that in math, thirty-two percent of our students were tested into the lowest levels of adult basic ed. So the coordinating board broke it up into two different levels of adult basic ed. The higher levels were allowed to continue to place into developmental courses as we have in the past. The lower levels, the recommendation is that we, we advise them to look at adult basic ed. Well, I have concerns with adult basic ed, so thirty-two percent in math, it was about, um, I want to say sixteen percent in reading, and it was less than ten percent in, in writing. Two things with regards to the math. The state is moving further and further away at the higher ed level from algebra-based courses. You know, algebra is a precursor to calculus, which is what you want to take if you're going to go into engineering or the STEM fields. But how many of our students actually go into engineering and STEM fields? And so what they're saying now, Dr. Treisman out of the University of Texas at Austin, is saying we need to develop different pathways for students with regards to math. A mathways pathway, a statway, you know, math that students will actually need to use throughout their lives and careers, statistics and mathways for the non-STEM fields. And so if we're going at the state away from Algebra II, and then the new TSI, guess what the math area is based on? Algebra II. And so then, isn't that contradictory? And so what the state did is they said, we're going to delay implementation of the new TSI until the fall of fifteen. So this particular fall, summer and fall, we will continue to place students, holistic advisement to get them into the courses that they need to be in. And my hope is that in the fifteen session, we address any concerns with the new TSI, as well as with HB five. Ultimately, if adult basic ed is the right path for our students, then I don't have an issue with, with guiding them to that path. Here's my issue with that path. The state of Texas funds adult basic education at the same level as the County of San Diego in California. So our entire state give, puts the same resources that San Diego County uses, number one. So we don't fund it. Number two, students can't use Title IV Pell for adult basic ed. The federal regulations do not allow that, for that to occur. And eighty-seven percent of our entering students are on some type of financial aid. They're on that financial aid, not because they want to be, because of their socioeconomic status. So they themselves wouldn't be able to pay for it. My issue is, how do students pay for it? I don't believe in just putting populations to the side. So I, I have real issues with it, I've asked the commissioner, I've questioned the commissioner, does this, then are you fundamentally changing the mission of the community college? We're an open admissions institution, very proud to be an open admissions institution. We have high expectations for our students, and I believe students will rise to those expectations. But we have to at least give them that opportunity. Please. President Guyton?
Dr. Sarada, uh, high towers, laptops, and the exponential increase of mobile devices. Uh, recently, Microsoft Office has been released for, um, iPads.
Finally?
Is it possible to look at?
Finally? 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 Now, if they'll only put a USB port on them, that's what I need, I still have my whole life on USBs.
Uh, is it possible to look at the possibility of establishing a relationship like we do with Microsoft Office for our laptops?
With Apple?
With Apple.
Absolutely, I mean, I would encourage that, absolutely. Now, we'll go through the process, Mr. Guyton, work with Ruben and his team in purchasing, present this to the board. But I think absolutely, I mean, I've seen entire school districts, when I lived in McAllen, McAllen ISD went to iPads for All, took a lot of heat, but they went to iPads, this was about seven or eight years ago, um, providing iPads, iTouches, and I forget what the other ones are, but from students in kindergarten all the way through high school. Um, and you're right, I mean, students, there is no life before computers for them, or life before the internet like for us. Um, and so, I mean, even my three-year-old, when he was fifteen months old, he had our phones and was doing this already, it's very intuitive for students. Um, I do think there's opportunities for us to explore. Um, you know, Dr. Giron and her team, along with all of you all that are part of that team, have looked at very creative ways, innovative ways of working with the budgets that we currently have to provide additional technology resources to our students, faculty, and staff. So I'm app, I'm very much interested in those possibilities. I did, I haven't gotten to the cloud yet, I don't know where the cloud exists theoretically, I need to make sure I have my files, and so eventually, I'll, I'll take that next step. Um, but the cloud and I still aren't on the same page. Other questions? Again, I can't thank you all enough for all that you do, for the great work that you do. Just wanted to give everyone an update of where we are on those areas, uh, an update on the compensation study, an update on enrollment, an update on where we are with Saks, with the Southern Association, those are the important things. The master plan, it's an exciting time to work at this institution, it really is. And I'm, I'm very privileged to work with each of you all, I'm very excited to be a part of this, um, professional development. Wanted to give an update on that, and then finally, recognize the amazing work that each of you all does on a daily basis. So I look forward to continuing the great work with you all. If there's ever rumors, ask, I'll be happy to address them, okay? We're not doing away with the Christmas holidays, we're not doing away with spring break, okay? Despite it being April Fool's Day, we're not doing away with those. Yesterday, I enjoyed Cesar Chavez Day, just like each of you all did. When it was on the board meeting for, uh, to change the calendar, everyone was stressed that we were taking something away, what we were actually doing. Ms. Ryan let us know we needed to go forward to add the twenty-third day of holiday for the schedule. So I enjoyed yesterday as well, I, I did, ended up doing a lot of chores, I would have preferred being at work. Um, but I certainly thank all of you all, now, there's several folks that are in the room, I, that I can't thank enough. The PowerPoint, I wish I was that talented. Rachel did an amazing job that works in Mr. Smith's office with the PowerPoint, Angelica and Pam are in the room. They make sure that I am where I need to be. I know there's refreshments that weren't here at the start, and people were stressed out about that, but they're here now, so help yourselves with that. Um, you know, the, the VPs that are in the room, they do a tremendous job, they represent each constituency of this particular institution fiercely. Um, PSA president's in the room, that, you, you do a great job of representing your constituents as well. CSA's been here at the, probably at the Trans Mountain Campus. Uh, Dr. Ramidis, everyone does a great job. Um, we do it very agreeable, can't always agree to everything, but even when we disagree, we're very agreeable. We have a great institution, I can't thank you all enough. So please enjoy some refreshments, and if you're so inclined to do, please donate blood. And we have some giveaways from the recycling program back there, some showerheads that, that they're trying to give away. So thank you all so much, and have a great day, appreciate it.